Okay, we are live here now September 2nd. And I'm going to be here for New Market's tour meeting. A pledge of allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under our individual liberty and justice for all. So, um, that's kind of this is if, if, so what do you think of public comment? If you have on our agenda, want to get public comment in your present, they're welcome to do so now. And also, um, you can call us at three four seven eight six eight eight two eight three. And the VIN number is five zero four eight three nine zero one two. And you can also join the needs unfortunate that.
Hello, um, I just wanted to talk about like this subject, masks for playing soccer. Uh, I'm very grateful that they have the field of high soccer. And I'm even happier that they will now allow two parents to attend games. I think that's wonderful. Um, just wondering if there's any opportunity to have discussion about wearing masks. Um, that's one of my questions. And second of all, I just, I was looking over a policy that was sent out and I was sort of looking at the NHI AA policy and it looks like we are matching up with that almost exact except for masks. And I just, you know, just wanted to talk about that, just where that is coming from.
Yes, um, we still took people back and forth then during the term of these days, but they need to hear. And I think that, uh, if they have on our agenda, we're going to talk about that. And we think, um, as our.
My backup too that came in, um, in the email from year students. She says, thank you for taking the time to hear my opinion on the required mask wearing for our varsity soccer season. I will try to, but mainly just wanted to address the impact it still have on our soccer season. Every day, and to be allowed to have a soccer season, concerned for the health of myself and my teammates. If we are required to wear masks during our soccer season. Our soccer, which is a position that requires you to run the majority of the time on the field. I will have a very difficult time breathing correctly while playing, if forced to wear a mask the entire time. As I would be re-breathing in carbon dioxide while also being short of breath. While I am lucky enough not to have, to not have any breathing issues. I know that several girls in my team struggle to breathe with asthma. And a mask will make it very difficult for them to breathe correctly and to breathe in the proper amount of healthy oxygen. PCA is not requiring their soccer teams to wear masks as well as any professional sports also. If we are being screened every single day, then we would know someone is sick and should be, should not be playing. So there should be no need for us to struggle to breathe with masks. I am very concerned for my health during soccer matches if I'm required to wear face masks. And I am a hundred percent confident in playing without a mask. Seeing as we would be outside and would have fresh air the entire time. NHI AA isn't even requiring masks, which should show us that our school should not be going out of our way to do something that will be harmful for our athletes. Thank you for your time and I hope that you take this and the health of New Market's athletes into consideration and will. And there was another.
Do you have, is it, I have response, but I don't find the original message. Sorry, I got that one.
Her, um, her mother?
Yes.
Yeah, I have that.
Okay, okay.
So Rachel Willer, um, wrote, um, and she said, and asked that this be read out loud. Um, so again, she is writing, um, because she feels very strongly about, uh, sports and face masks. Uh, so she says, the rule to force athletes to wear face masks during physical play this fall is so dangerous. I can't even believe it was considered, never mind put into place. Are you aware that NHI AA is not requiring athletes to wear masks? Why are we creating a potentially dangerous situation for our kids? Many kids on soccer and cross-country teams have asthma, which will likely be triggered with the lack of oxygen and re-breathing of carbon dioxide that happens when wearing any face coverings. The lack of oxygen for a sustained period of time can also cause impairment. He said last night in the meeting that students could opt out of playing if they didn't feel comfortable with these restrictions. What if instead we said masks are recommended and those that wanted to wear them could either wear them or opt out? So much has been taken away from these kids in the past six months and this fall. Sports season brings back a lot of them, a lot for them to look forward to. I cannot imagine my daughter choosing between her favorite sport and team and breathing. I am asking you to reconsider this restriction in light of the dangers it poses to our athletes. Signed Rachel Willer, 26 Maston Drive.
Any other comments? Nothing?
Nope.
Okay. Okay, if there's no further public comment, um, let's get into our agenda. Um, and Susan, do you have a report for us?
I do. So, um, I think I'd just like to start tonight by thanking, um, the administrative team, uh, the teachers' union and court staff union for their, uh, undying leadership through this crisis. Um, I've never seen people give so much, uh, on behalf of students. Their dedication, um, and willingness to be flexible and be problem solvers has just been outstanding. I can say that the administrative team, um, it's, it's nothing short of miraculous. Uh, the work that has taken place in order to try to open these schools for kids and also offer a remote learning experience, um, that allows for students to be able to be taught their core classes with our faculty. This of course has required us to change literally about everything that we're doing. And to try to do that, you know, uh, and change routines that have been in place for perhaps all of our lives, you know? Um, it's just, uh, it's just outstanding. However, as we sit here tonight, Wednesday, uh, we have a couple of challenges that we're struggling to overcome. And one of them I mentioned last night, and that is that we do not have. Employed here to cover lunches for teachers. We need ten monitors to cover lunches during the middle of the day in order for us to be able to open school at the junior senior high school. We believe that we, um, are going to be able to, uh, staff, you know, the remaining positions other than some para positions, uh, which we will continue to hire. But I'm pleading for anyone who is in our community that is available to work Monday through Thursday for three hours a day in the middle of the day, to please come forward and contact Patty Banfield, my administrative assistant, so that we can get enough bodies in place, um, to be able to relieve teachers so that they can just have a duty-free lunch one time during the course of their seven and a half hour day here. Um, with that, um, we should be able to open our schools. We still need some paraprofessionals, we still need some other positions filled. Um, and we will continue to try to, um, manage that, but we, we cannot open if we do not have coverage for lunches. So if you are a mother or a full district and you have time during the day, um, we would greatly appreciate the community support for that. Uh, the second thing I wanted to mention tonight is, um, you know, we're, we're, we're figuring out different levels of details around school opening. Um, you know, we've been working nights and weekends trying to resolve some of these challenges. And, um, as we solve a problem, it ultimately has ripple effects on other areas. And so one of the things that we've come to understand in the last couple of days is that, um, the way that the first three days will look for school for our kids coming in, if we're able to get the monitors, um, is really going to be centered around developing new routines. Um, and I say that because, uh, we have a plan for arrival, but nobody has done this. Nobody, parents haven't done this, staff haven't done this, students haven't done this. It's not going to go smoothly, right? The best laid plans, you know, um, will show their flaws when you go to implementation. It's not because we haven't put our efforts into planning. It's that we're all doing incredibly different from what we've ever done before. And so we realize as we, um, approach this opening that, um, our focus for the first three days, our first week together with kids is going to be around routines. We have not had to deliver lunches to every child in the classroom and snacks to every child delivered to their classroom. It's likely not going to happen perfectly, right? And so it's going to take longer to do lunches. It's going to take longer to transition to understand how you navigate around the building. Bathroom breaks will take longer because fifty percent of the stalls and fifty percent of those washrooms are not going to be available. We can't figure out the details of the flow until we actually get the kids in here. And so for the first several days, our focus will be on making the connections that we always would at the beginning of the year and developing and understanding the new, new routines. Handing out the laptops, you know, getting ourselves situated. And so therefore, um, uh, for remote learners, the focus in the first few days really doesn't apply to them. Um, also with the remote learners, um, we can't have them coming in and picking up their materials and their equipment. The on-campus learners are there. And so, um, that cohort, uh, we're not going to be able to provide them with their box of goodies, bags of goodies that they're going to need, uh, for remote learning. So that will mean that remote learners will be picking up their packets on Friday, the 11th, when on-campus learners are not here. And then everyone will start into a new routine on that following Monday. So again, uh, I mentioned this at the parent meeting last night. Um, I'm mentioning it tonight and I will also send out a note today. There are orientation meetings, you know, for parents, both on-campus learning and for remote learning. The principals are sending those dates out. I know that Principal Dalton sent one out and there is a meeting for parents and students tomorrow night. Um, similar to the meetings that we've been holding. And I encourage every parent and student, um, to the extent that they're available to participate in that, um, orientation. Principal Pine is having an orientation also. I know one of the dates, I believe for his remote learning, um, families is Wednesday. I think that's the ninth. Um, an orientation for the junior senior high school for remote learners, um, would be the following night, Thursday, and the Friday that you would pick up your materials. So I just wanted to let folks know that so much ground has been covered. I couldn't be any prouder. I really couldn't, um, sitting here as your superintendent, working side by side with so many people to make this a reality. But there's just some things we don't have control over and, um, and we're hoping that, uh, there are others out here resources and maybe a little bit of time that can reach out to us to help us bring this dream, uh, into fruition. You know, for the families, students and staff here in New Market. So, um, that's my report for tonight, uh, just a plea and an update.
Susan, thank you for your leadership in all these efforts too. None of this would have worked without that coordination from you and the administrative team and I sincerely mean that.
So, but it's, it's going to come down to the school won't open if we don't have these ten positions filled, period.
This is, this is what I'm down to.
So we made it this far.
I don't have, I, I, I just, I've advertised everywhere I can.
Yeah.
I, I, I don't know what to do.
And the reason is Susan is that, um, uh, teachers, teachers need to be relieved so they can hardly have lunch break essentially, right?
Exactly.
Without, without kids, without having a normal lunch break.
Especially when, in the cohort situation where it's the same room all day. You need to have a moment to step away and collect yourself to proceed with the rest of the day.
Yeah, exactly. It's, you know.
So Susan, you said three hours, middle of the day, Monday through Thursday?
Yes.
Okay.
Don't need the help on Friday because that's the planning day.
Okay.
It's really a coverage while kiddos are here to relieve staff. We, Fridays are fine.
It's compensated, right?
It is compensated, not a lot of money, but token anyways, uh, twelve to thirteen dollars an hour.
Where are they, have you reached out to UNH?
Um, we tried to find a vehicle for advertising with UNH and they don't really have like a board or anything that we could find. I know that our, uh, Student Services Director sent out, uh, a plea on, I guess there's a Facebook, um, page for them. Uh, she sent out, uh, an email there. We posted, um, at the unemployment office, we posted on Indeed. I've, 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 every local source I could figure, I, I, I just don't, I'm, I just don't know what else to do. What are the hours again? Um, it would be like ten thirty to, I'm going to guess, uh, like twelve thirty or one, somewhere in that range.
And then that could change though too, once everything gets going. If we're able to keep the school open, once everything gets going, we, we can probably change. Once everybody gets in a groove.
Yeah, I, I, it just, you know, it's, I'd, I'd, I'd love to use membership because we know what the situation with COVID is here.
Right.
So my preference is to have parents if I could because of that, you know? Um, I don't know outside of New Market, but I know that, um, families here, parents here care deeply about their kids. And, um, and so we wouldn't, you know, have, um, some of the same, you know, concerns perhaps that we would if it's somebody from outside of our community. So again, if you have networks, if you know anybody, it can be anybody, you know?
Well, there might be kids home from college doing remote classes.
They could, they, there could be students here. There could be, it could be that we have somebody that's in their junior and senior year going to UNH that graduated from here. They could help us out. Love, love, any ideas, you know, just, just, just reach out to Patty Banfield. She's the one, she'll send out the application and, and we'll process this as quickly as we can. I just, I don't, we've been advertising and I just, I don't have an answer for this one.
Yeah, we just stink to make it this far.
It is, it is. Um, even the teaching positions, I mean, it's a miracle, you know? Um, that we've been able to hire staff, qualified staff, you know? We've added one at every grade level. Some of them have been moved from, um, our para positions who were looking for a break. Uh, some of them are tutors who are, have been certified and some we've had, we've hired from the outside. Um, but we, you know, it's, it's just, uh, there's nothing more we can do. As, as they say, we're leaving it all on the field. We're doing what we can, but.
Susan, I'm sure you guys have thought of this, but I'll mention it anyways too. Just another, um, you, you guys are good to walk one thought with me, but, um, I know area districts like Princeton, Oyster River or Exeter, who, whose folks, they might not be utilizing all their folks right now. You know, I wonder, you know, if there may be, you know, a pool of folks there, you know?
There's not a district, Michael, right now that isn't desperate for people.
I know, but, but like there's one remote in, in Oyster River and Exeter. You know, do they have folks that don't have anything to do during the remote area?
Well, that's why I've, um, put this out on, um, unemployment. So if people have been laid off, that, that I'm trying to tap anyone that I can find, but I don't, there isn't, um, a group of people that are not being used because should they shift back? You know, you want to keep your, your, your pool of candidates, you know? You want to keep your employees because eventually this will pass. Um, so, yeah, I, I.
We could have any non-coaching clause.
Yes, but I'm. Yes, but I'm not aware of any, you know? I'm not aware of any. And if anybody does have connections beyond, you know, my reach in other ways, please do tap them.
So, Susan, I have to ask, so I can, I always look at both sides of this. So, what happens if we don't get these ten people? What will happen?
Well, I think, what I'm thinking, if we can't get them immediately, because we'll keep advertising, you know? Something I'm hoping will shake, you know? We'll keep trying, right?
Right.
So, one thing that we might need to do is say, we'll start middle school on campus, and we'll start high school remote. Because sixth graders, I think, and middle schoolers, you know, at that age group, it's still preferable. It's preferable for every child to be here.
Yeah.
But I would say we'd have to prioritize, and we'd have to say, okay, middle school will come in, and high school will start remote. And then, if we can fill the positions, then we can bring them back. I honestly just don't know what else to do at this point. I didn't anticipate that this was going to be the issue. I just didn't. I figured, I just didn't, you know?
We did, we have said all along that this is built on a fragile foundation. If one thing or, you know, an uptick or, you know, a key position is lost, you know?
Or people not following the protocols.
Yeah, the whole house.
Yeah, it's just every single thing has to fall into place to be done perfectly.
It's so many variables, and everyone, you know, many of them that can just bring it all down. So, it's not totally surprising, but...
No, I just wasn't thinking this would be the thing. I thought transportation would be the thing. I thought there were so many things that would seem like so insurmountable along the way.
That's the rule of this whole thing, though, is that something pops up that you don't necessarily anticipate.
It is that, and it's been that for every school district, you know? It's, could we get the PPE? We got the PPE. Could we get the sanitation products and the ionizers? We got the sanitation products and the ionizers. Could we, you know, could we get the transportation thing figured out? That fell in place. So many school districts couldn't get as far as we've gotten. But I'm confident...
We're well ahead of a lot of districts, and I think that bears acknowledgement that, I mean, as Kim said, your leadership, we started early, we started planning, we have committees, and we are way ahead of a lot of districts. I mean, we're fortunate that we had a school that happened to, we happened to have expanded, and we're a small town. But that aside, we're really, it's been a ton of work, and I don't know if people realize just how much work and planning has gone in. It just bears thinking, again.
And the volunteers, too.
Absolutely. Everyone here. Gary's out there spray painting little footprints on the... I mean, the police chief's out there today, you know, with the fire chief. We're trying to figure it all out, you know? Jamie's been working all summer long, the teachers' union. I mean, I have been here almost every Saturday with one of our union leadership groups, you know? And you have, too. We've been here on Saturdays doing the MOAs. We've been here on Saturdays, you know, just trying to get communication out at night. I mean, if this does, if the school opening doesn't happen, it isn't for lack of effort, and it isn't for lack of heart. It isn't for any of that. It will be circumstances beyond all of our control. But I believe, I've been here only a year, but there's a heart
Yep.
to this community. And I think that, I think that if we can just find this last little piece...
That's what I was going to say, Susan. One of the things that we have on our side, among the sides and among the buildings, is the heart that we have in this town. When people are given the reality of a situation of this is what this means, people rise to the occasion, and I believe they will in this case.
Remember the Mother's Day flood?
Yes!
People that showed up in sandbag? People will stand up. I guarantee it.
Yeah.
They will. It's just the way this town is.
So, if you can't, if you can't do it yourself, community members, I mean, if you know the resource or if you know of other folks that might be able to do it, we'd love to hear from you.
Absolutely. Absolutely.
And speaking of thanks, I want to make sure that we thank Rick Malaski and the crew at DBW. They went into the elementary school, widened a portion of it so that we can continue to drop off kids while keeping vehicular flow going. And it's going to be just, you know, yeah, part of the dependencies that we have, and we really appreciate it.
Yeah, so much. Teachers, this is hard, you know? I mean, I'm on calls every day with teachers, and people are nervous. You know, we've never done this before, and it's so uncomfortable. Educators are used to, you know, planning and having everything all figured out, right? I mean, Jamie's here, you know. We're used to, you know, we know our, we know, and we have a plan, but we've never done this before. So, everybody's uncomfortable. And so, I just can't express my gratitude enough for the efforts of everybody and the patience and tolerance and cooperation.
Any other questions or thoughts with superintendent? None, okay. So, we're moving on to discussion items, co-curricular and athletic guidelines, which are in the materials. Jamie, do you want to, I think that microphone works. Is Sheena joining us or what?
Uh, no, they're at school working on challenges we have over there. So, Jamie and I are covering this while they're working, yeah.
Thank you, Jamie.
You're welcome. So, I guess we'll go over the return to play guidelines first. And I think you all have the document, right?
Yep.
All right. So, I'll just kind of highlight it, you know, it's six, seven pages long, so... So, you know, pretty much spent all summer, you know, going through NHIA and National Federation and all that and trying to pull everything together, what worked for us to, to save, as safe as possible, safer return to play, I guess, because we can't guarantee anything. So, I went through and put a few things together. I know the Steering Committee approved varsity sports at the low and moderate risk. And part of the reason, you know, we're only doing varsity is, a couple of thoughts is, you know, the varsity kids, they don't, they never get that back. The seniors, you know, like last spring, the seniors lost it, and they don't have a chance to get it back this spring. Also, we don't have the time, the spacing, the ability to screen in two hundred athletes after school like we do every day coming into the school. We don't have the space to put the, we're only going with one team on a field this year. We don't have the space to have, you know, JV varsity and middle school, all those teams out there at the same time. So, a lot of the middle school teams, I think my last count was, there was eleven middle school teams in our league that are not running sports or only doing in-house sports. Transportation, we were told that Saturdays and after four o'clock is what's going to be our window for a bus. So, it made it difficult, as well as no locker rooms. And we're going to stagger our start times for our practices. They're going to start at three thirty, one at three forty-five, and one at four o'clock so that the athletic trainer can check in everybody before practice, and the older kids can go home and get their gear and come back. We don't have a place to store gear during the school day either, without locker rooms and without using lockers in the hallway. So, you know, there's a lot of factors that went into that for us. As I said, we're, you know, we'll be following the same protocols that we follow during the school day. We'll be screening upon arrival. You know, we have staggered our times, so everybody has a time when they're going to arrive. A screening will start before their practice. They're asked to stay in their cars until it's time to start screening. When they're screened in by the athletic trainer, they'll go directly to their practice facility. Each team will be assigned a field for the day, and we'll rotate the large field and then one of the smaller practice fields between the boys and the girls varsity teams. And they'll go to that field for the day. They'll spend their hour and a half practice there. And they won't mix fields, and we'll spread out as much as possible. As soon as practice is over, they'll be instructed to ride to their vehicles and leave the facility. Each player on the soccer team will be assigned a ball that they'll bring back and forth every day, and it's their job to clean it at home. They'll be assigned a scrimmage penny that, so we don't have pennies that we're sharing. And we're getting masks for the players, face coverings for the players, so that, you know, that will all be provided. We'll have hand sanitizer. The coaches will bring a ball for the scrimmage type when they do competitions in practice, and the coach will make sure that that gets cleaned as much as possible and before the next training session. We're not using bags, we're not using bleachers, so no places to congregate. No communal water bottles and water jugs. Everyone brings their own water. You know, so we've tried to put in as many possibilities. You know, we want them coming dressed for practice, so they're not getting dressed on the field. And if they do have to bring a bag out, all the bags will be spread out six feet apart. So, again, we tried to minimize any opportunity that they would have to congregate and, you know... It's going to be difficult for them. A lot of them are spending the summer together, you know, and either without masks or, you know, not following some of these things. So, they're going to naturally just go to what they know. So, we're just trying to minimize that as much as possible. We are retaining our JV coaches at half salaries so that they can help create pods in practice to break up the groups. Another set of eyes, another voice to remind, you know, socially distanced and, you know, make sure the mask is on and all those things. Let's see. I think that's pretty much everything for practices and screening.
It's going to even, like you may have covered this, it's going to be more of a regional approach versus the traditional teams that we may have played.
Yes, yep, yep. Yeah, so our schedule is going to be a regional schedule, and, you know, I'm still trying to build that. So, parents or anybody that, don't look at our website, don't look at the NHIA website. I will be adding to that. It's, I think, you know, at one point today, we had three games up there. So, still trying to work out dates. Everyone, you know, some schools haven't even had their meetings yet of what they're offering for sports, and, you know, they haven't finalized that. So, still waiting on that a little bit. You know, so still building that schedule. So, it's going to be regional. We probably won't go further than a half hour. You know, we are going to play Oyster River, we're going to play Epping, we're going to play Raymond. You know, so some schools out of our division. But the regular season doesn't really matter as far as standings. There'll be no standings. You know, the games will be on the NHIA site just so people know about them. At the end of the season, there is an open tournament per division, and as a school, you have the option to decide if you want to go to that or not. And what that's going to look like, we don't know yet. The NHIA is still working on that. They're just trying to open things up right now, and they'll get to those details after. You know, I think they're looking at regionalizing the tournament as well. I know a lot of the northern schools and superintendents don't want to come to the south. They, you know, they have whole counties that don't have cases up there, so, you know, they want to try to keep to themselves. Transportation, we'll, the, as I said, weekends and after four o'clock, for the most part, is when we can get a bus. So, we'll be playing on Saturdays, and for schools that have lights, we're trying to start at six o'clock as well. And our home games are going to start at six o'clock. You know, so it's easier for the other school to get a bus. It'll be a little cooler for, you know, wearing the mask as well. So, you know, breathing in the mask will be a little bit easier when it's a little cooler, and the sun has started to go down or gone down. We, so on the buses, they'll be wearing masks. They will be sitting one to a seat, socially distanced. We may have to reduce travel rosters. You know, looking at twenty or so on a team with coaches and everything. So, we have to make sure that we can spread everybody out, and, you know, they will be safely distanced on the bus. We are encouraging parents, if they want to take their child home after the game, you know, if they want to take their, in the car without having to go on the bus, if, you know, they don't have to worry about wearing the mask, they don't have to worry about, you know, if they're sweaty and they want to eat or drink on the way home and stuff like that, so...
Because they can't eat a drink on the bus. There's no food.
No food or drinks on the bus, no stopping after. I mean, we wouldn't stop because the games are so close anyway. But, you know, I mean, I guess like in the classroom, they could pull it down, take a drink, and, but they have to keep the mask on to...
Well, I'm just thinking, you know, we used to carve them up before we stuck them on the bus. There will be...
Yep, pre-hydrating will have to be before they get on the bus. I mean, you know, Epping is seven miles away, PCA seven miles away, you know, and stuff like that. So, the bus, part of why we've gone to the regional schedule is because of transportation as well. So, you know, so that's, you know, when they get there, they can, they can drink, you know, and try to continue to hydrate. But, you know, on the bus, we've been, we've been asked to keep the mask on them and no food or anything like that, so... I think it's easier, easier for the bus company to clean afterwards as well, you know? So, for spectators, most of, most of the schools, I called, I had about fifteen schools that I had contacted about what their policies are going to be for spectators. And most schools are going with visiting fans and two parents or guardians or people that live in the same household as the player. Each player will be allowed two fans, you know, family members to attend. We'll use a sign-in process. The day before the game, they have to let us know who their two people are going to be for that day. I'll have a list. We'll have myself and at least one other person from the athletic department will be on as game directors. We will have a detailed officer at our home games and, you know, helping with, with protocols and everything. Our responsibility would be to make sure that protocols are followed. It won't be the police department's responsibility to make sure our protocols are followed. They'll just be there if we have an unruly fan and, you know, if we need some assistance, but we don't have to pull one of their officers off the road, just like we have for the basketball games. It wouldn't be any different than that. So, when the fans come, they would go to check-in area, and they would be scanned, just like our athletes are. And, you know, we checked in, and then we're not using bleachers. We won't have visiting fans, so they'll have plenty of space to socially distance along the sideline, behind, wraparound, behind the goals a little bit. We'll have mark off the field even further than normal. And that's spectators.
Jamie, we'll be asking, remember the, he was from the physical therapy place?
Athletic trainer? Yes, yep.
Will we have him again or no?
Yes, yep, yep. We still have that contract. You know, so he'll still be covering all games and practices. You know, very essential. He's going to be, he's going to be helping a lot with the screen-ins. If someone, he'll be at every practice. If someone does start feeling symptoms, we'll have an isolation area at practices and games that all the coaches and athletes will know about. We'll put someone there, just like we do in the school, you know, and make sure that nobody else goes to that area and anything. For spectators, we're asking you to stay off the, off the field. You know, we're asking to, you know, stay in your car until the event starts. If you're dropping off or picking up for practice, stay in your vehicle. You know, we're going to have a lot of athletes coming and going and, you know, some possibly rec programs out there and everything, too, that we're trying to minimize any cross-contamination or gatherings, large gatherings. And that's part of why we're doing the two spectators as well. If you look at just with players, trainers, coaches, referees, and everything, that puts us about fifty people. And then, if you're bringing in, each fan gets, each player gets two. We're right around a hundred right there. So, we're trying to stay around the hundred that the governor recommends.
So, for spectators, for the away games, that would be the same rule, so parents won't be able to go to away games, correct?
Right. Most schools are doing that. You know, one thing we've said is we'll be communicating going into a game. You know, what's your policy? Make sure, you know, a couple of days ahead, we know everything that, you know, is going on. You know, most schools that I've talked to are trying to stay right around that hundred instead of just opening up. And, you know, everyone will have masks on, you know, but they're just trying to keep things under control this year. And, you know, we're just hoping that we can get through a season. You know, we all know that, you know, it could be, if there's an outbreak or something happens, it, you know, could be shut down or, you know, it could be shut down for maybe a week where we're waiting for a test result or something like that. So, we've spread out the games. We're only going two games a week just in case, you know, we do have, you know, if we're playing Epping and they... know, we do have, you know, if we're playing Epping and they do happen to have something that, you know, we're not playing another game right on top. And then we've contaminated five or six teams in the course of three days, you know, so we're trying to spread out the games and just in case something does happen.
What did the refs say, Jamie? Like, did you have a hard time finding refs?
Those are all, there's a state assigner for each sport. And I, we've been told that they have, I think they're at about 70% capacity, about 70% of the guys have come back. One of the things, that's another reason why a lot of schools are not doing sub-varsity teams, they're just, we're, you know, we've lost about 30% of our officials for soccer anyway. So I know they had a hard enough time filling games in the past. So, you know, not having our sub-varsity teams will help with the availability of officials.
And the officials will be wearing masks as well?
I believe they will be, yes, that's one detail I have to check into. But, yeah, because I know they've talked about instead of whistles, using noise makers or something like that. So that's a detail I'll have to check into.
Can I ask a few more questions? Are you interfering or anything?
No.
Are the kids wearing mouth guards?
No, mouth guards are not required this year.
Okay.
So that will, that will help with the breathing as well.
What about heading the ball? Let's, let's picture all our kids playing soccer. I mean, how are, how are we going to keep them from playing soccer?
The NHIA has not, as far as the game itself, they haven't made modifications on that. We are going to, like our ball people, I want to try to have three at every game and, you know, so extra balls and they'll have gloves and they'll have sanitation devices. So every time the ball goes out, we'll, we'll clean the ball and put a new one in and we'll do that as much as we can, you know, to try to take every precaution necessary.
Jamie, I thought I heard that throw-ins were no longer going to happen.
They've discussed that, but they didn't, they didn't make that change. I know there are some, you know, there are some leagues, you know, not part of the National Federation or the NHIA that are, that are doing that, you know. Seacoast United could be doing that or Travel Soccer could be doing that. But the NHIA didn't make that change. Gloves are, you know, gloves are an option for, for athletes to wear. You know, if they want to, you know, some of them wear like the batting glove or wide receiver gloves and stuff like that, that's an option for them to wear so they can wash them after games and all that. As far as cross-country, we are, all the big invitational meets have been canceled. So we're doing all tra-, either dual or. So we'll be with one school or maybe two schools, depending on the size of the team. Oyster River has a bigger team than we're used to, so if we do something with Oyster River, it's probably just going to be Oyster River and us. But we'll be doing staggered starts in those meets. So all the New Market boys and girls would start at one time, run out, and then say 10 minutes later, all the Oyster River athletes would start and run out. So we wouldn't be mixing with schools. And then, you know, any, if they, you know, if they're scoring it and giving medals at the end, you know, everyone will, all the regular safety, social distancing protocols will be followed like any other, like any other time.
Jamie, there seems to be a lot of questions about the whole mask requirement. Can you just talk about the rationale and how we got to this decision?
Yeah, you know, it's, it's hard to have a policy, you know, from seven o'clock to three o'clock and then all of a sudden four o'clock and, you know, there's all rules, everything's off the table. You know, and, so I think it's a little difficult, more difficult for us because our kids are in school. You know, a lot of the area schools are, are remote. So, you know, if there's an incident on their cross-country team, they just, they just, you know, isolate their cross-country. Have to worry about, they've been in school for three days and now that we've, you know, our kids have gone through eight classes, you know, in the course of two days, how many kids did they sit next to, how many kids did they walk by, stuff like that. So, you know, so that's a lot of it, you know, as well as the research of wearing masks and, you know, and the safest way to, you know, there's, there's no 100%, but, you know, the more barriers and precautions you can take, the better.
Thank you.
Are you proposing that the cross-country team wears masks as well?
Yeah, you know, it's, it's, it is difficult. You know, our coach ran a 5K the other day in a, in a mask and, you know, he said, other than the noise on the inhale and, and everything, that it was, you know, that was a little annoying and kind of sounded like he was going to suffocate a little bit. But, you know, it's, you know, if that's, if that's what we have to do, then, yeah, I mean, it's, you know, that's how we keep our kids safe.
Are other towns wearing masks during play, do you know?
Not, not many. I know a couple of schools are, some volleyball teams are because they're indoors and they're close to each other at the net. Well, every school that we're going to play against is going to wear masks, they've agreed to put them on, you know, to play us.
Have you been at their facility?
Yes, yep.
So are there schools that won't play us because they won't wear masks or?
It's, yeah, a couple of schools have, have said that, yep.
So then do we make the decision that maybe, I guess you just see how, how the season goes, right? But if it gets, if we start seeing the uptick in cases and you have a team that's not willing to keep our team safe, we have to make a call?
Right, right. Right now, I'm not scheduling any games with someone that says they won't wear masks. So, yep. So, you know, I mean, it's, it's a different year, you know, so, you know, if we have to play a team three or four times to get games in, I mean, that's what, it's really, like I said, there's no standings, it doesn't matter. You know, if we play Spalding and they beat us or, you know, it, it's about our kids getting the opportunity to go out and play right now. You know, and if we go to the open tournament at the end, we'll be playing against all teams in our division and that's, you know, that's where, you know, we would, we would try to compete at that point.
So this, this is, this isn't an easy decision in some respects. You know, the NHIA AA guidelines, which I've read thoroughly and I've read all the sub-documents within them, they don't, they kind of, to use an.
Yep.
They don't really say clearly one way or the other because if you drill down on some of the documents that they cite, they clearly, like especially the CDC documents, they say you use a mask whether you're indoors or outdoors. And the example on athletics they give is if you're running, like say down a, like the rail trail or whatever. You don't have to use a mask as long as you can stay distant, you know? It's not, you know, you know, you run down and if you're not comfortable, you run with a group of six without a mask on, that's not what they're saying. So it's, the NHIA AA guidelines aren't really clear on it, okay? The documents, the CDC has is pretty clear on it. So and just if we reduce it back to how is COVID spread, it becomes a little clearer. It's like water droplets that we breathe out. I mean, I don't think anybody disagrees with that. And that being the case, what the scientists say is the best way to reduce the spread is to wear a mask. I mean, I'm saying what's obvious, but, I mean, we all love athletics. We all want to go back, we all want to go back to normal, but we all need to keep folks safe as well. And, you know, we wouldn't, in our gym classes during the school day, allow kids to play soccer, you know, without a mask on and be doing that. You know, let alone. From, we don't know what their policies are, where they've been. So it's, it's not an easy one, the NHIA AA didn't really help out on it. They didn't say that you have to or don't have to wear masks. In fact, they, there's a document in their website from the soccer subcommittee which says, I'll quote it, I guess, is. It's the unified soccer rules for 2021 and it says cloth, face coverings are permissible. And they don't say one way or the other, whether you have to wear them. So we're, as a district, left to make, make this decision. And one, one thing that I think maybe a couple of folks who made public comment or that were read, they talked about, for instance, a child with asthma, which is a respiratory disease, is it not? You know, in the logic being that they may have trouble breathing with a mask on. Well, would you expose them to COVID when they have a respiratory disease and cannot make them wear a mask?
But they can have symptoms without a mask on.
That doesn't make any sense to me, I mean, just logically speaking and, you know, that's my two cents.
Do we have, are you aware of any CDC discussion on wearing a mask with activity at this point? See, there's a cardiovascular impact and some re-breathing of your CO2, hopefully not too much, but I just don't know whether there's been research from doctors whether or not there's an effect or concern?
According to the Department of Public Health, there, that is not true. That wearing a mask does not create a situation in which you're inhaling carbon monoxide.
Dioxide.
Dioxide.
I would hope not.
Yeah, I hope not.
That's a whole different problem. But did they say that's not an issue?
We have additional problems.
The masking is not, does not create that condition.
You're, you're.
Can I just say something? Other concerns I have about wearing a mask, not only retaining CO2, but just your vision is obscured. I looked up, I sent you, did you read, see that video I sent you today? It's been one of those. I know you've been busy, but it's a video that the USA Soccer, the chief medical director put out saying they advise not wearing masks during training and games because of, one, difficulty problems and, two, visual problems. I know myself, when I have a mask on, I feel like I can't see, I don't have a clear sight looking down. And I'm afraid there's going to be some collisions or, you know, other aspects of injury that could happen.
I think there's no question, I mean, none of, none of this is ideal. None of what we're doing is ideal. None of it is what we would want to do if we had a choice. And, you know, there's many different layers to this that we all have to take into consideration and the steering committee and the work groups absolutely have. None of this is taken lightly, none of it, you know? I have a child myself, I know what it is to be a mother, you know, of an athlete. I was an athlete myself, I get it, you know? And really what it's come down to is safety first and safety guidelines can't change in one situation, you know, because of something else.
Outdoor, so it's changed a lot with the air.
Let me, let me, if I can just, if I can just have just two minutes, then I will not say another word on this, okay? But it's, it's, it's complex, you know? We here in New Market, and as I said over and over again, what we're doing here is based on our situation, not on Exeter's, not on Epping's, not on anyone else's. We are trying to come back to school live. We have staff, we have students that do have at-risk situations, who are willing to come so long as we are able to maintain a high standard of safety. And it's not just physical safety, it is, it's psychological safety. If you have asthma, just like the student that Mike mentioned, we have those staff members, we have those students. I can tell you right now that the level of anxiety is very high. People are very nervous. They're nervous that they're going to come, kids are going to come back and they're not going to mask. And I'm not saying it's our staff, I was on the phone, I was on a call with, not call, whatever, video conference call with students today. They're concerned, they've expressed to me that they're concerned. They said so in our survey, that people aren't going to follow the protocols, your children are nervous, your staff rightly so, and I'm not saying everyone is nervous. Because they know what the science says, COVID is spread through air currents, carrying microscopic droplets when we breathe, when we cough, when we sneeze. When you engage in physical activity or sing or play a musical instrument, then you're rising the respiratory excretions. And instead of it being a six-foot radius, then you're expelling these droplets 12 to 15 feet out. If, if students are not wearing masks and they're breathing heavy, their spray is extending out 12 to 15 feet. You can't play soccer and socially distance. And what the guidelines say is that if you can't do that, that you should be wearing a mask. This has nothing to do with soccer, okay? This has to do with, we should not, any of us, be within 12 to 15 feet of each other without a mask on, never mind if we're breathing heavy, because it sprays out and that is how this very highly contagious disease is spread. This town implemented a masking policy, the town, and they did so because they knew students from all over the place were going to be returning. We have Exeter Academy, we have UNH next, we have students that live near us that are not members of our community. Three weeks ago, we had 13 cases here in New Market, we have 16 now, okay? Is that going to increase?
That's total, just so people know.
I'm just saying, total, total, total. I'm just saying, three weeks ago, it was 13, it's now 16, okay? We do have a couple of active cases here. We don't want to be taking unnecessary risks. I want athletics to play, I was an athlete, I get it. I want that for your kids, I want that for coaches, I want that for families. I don't want undue exposure to our staff, students and families because we don't know for the communities that we're playing what those protocols are. We have seen ourselves, that if you go anywhere, there's teenagers getting together, we hear it, hey, they're, they're out in club sports, they're not masking, they're next to each other, you know? If that's what's going to be happening in other communities and they're not masking all day and they come here, how can we guarantee to the staff and to the other students here that they are safe? It's not just physical safety, it's psychological safety, you know? People want to make sure that they're coming. Worry-free, knowing that everybody's following the same protocols. And so it's not that we're trying to create a dangerous situation, what we're trying to do here in fact is provide as many opportunities as we can for normalcy. I personally don't care whether we win one game, that is not what athletics is about. It is not about winning. It's about working together, knowing how to be a good citizen and a member of a team, it's about learning leadership skills, it's about building community and for the higher good, we make some sacrifice. That is what athletics is about in a high school environment. That is what we don't want to lose, that is what we don't want to lose. And if it means we can't run full blast, fine. Let's just allow these kids and these families this opportunity. And that's really where the choice comes down to. Most school districts around us have made that choice, it's too risky. The reason why we can't get a lot of competition has to do with people not participating, saying the inherent risk of this is too great. We've said so in terms of our high-contact sports, our high-risk sports, we, we're not comfortable with that. We weren't even comfortable with moderate without these kinds of guidelines. And it's not a me thing and it's not a Jamie thing, it's not. It's 81 people represented by students, parents, educators, board members that have come together. And the guidelines that we have in place, you know, ensure the safety, health and welfare of all. And so I will not say another thing, masking is, is, is necessary unfortunately, sadly. But I will sleep with my mask on if I have to, to make it safe and make other people feel good enough to come into the school district. I'm willing to make that sacrifice for your children, for the staff here. Thank you.
Thank you, Susan. Just in response, you asked a question about, you know, were there any guidelines about sports in particular, and I did. And you got to peel back the NHIA AA guidelines and drill down and drill down. And CDC did publish something on August 7th of this year and, you know, I'll, I'll go to the pertinent part about higher intensity sports and just read you what it says, it's fairly brief. It says, "People who are engaged in high-intensity activities like running may not be able to wear a mask if it causes difficulty breathing." If unable to wear a. If unable to wear a mask, consider conducting the activity in a location with greater ventilation and air exchange, for instance, outdoors versus indoor, and," and being the operative word, "where it is possible to maintain physical distance from others." And it goes on to say, "In situations where individuals might raise their voices such as shouting or chanting, we strongly encourage wearing masks." And I'm, and again, I'm just reading from documents cited in the NHIA AA, and I'd just like to read a couple more things if I may, because I think these are also CDC documents. The next one was updated on July 15th of 2020, and it covers social distancing. What is social distancing? It's also called, quote, "physical distancing," meaning keeping a safe space between yourself and other people who are not from your household. To practice social or physical distancing, stay at least six feet, about two arms' lengths, from other people who are not from your household, both indoors and outdoors. That's their current guideline. And finally, they, they also have issued, stated August 7th, considerations for wearing masks. CDC recommends people wear masks in public settings and when around people who do not live in your household, especially when other social distancing measures are difficult to maintain. On the next page, it refers to, you know, wearing masks, and it gives the example of the runner. You know, it may be difficult. I'm a runner. I'll be honest with you, I don't wear one when I go down the rail trail, but if I see somebody coming the other way, I get out, I get out of the way if I, you know, if I see a biker. But it gives the example of a runner running on a trail. You don't need to wear your mask, and as long as you can physically distance, so, it stinks. I, I mean, I don't, nobody wants to wear a mask when you're doing any, really, you don't want to wear a mask at all, but I think the guidance is pretty clear, and common sense on it is fairly clear.
Yeah, I'm less concerned with someone, the exposure of someone entering the building as long as the protocols are followed, because in addition to the six-foot, we're also masking, so we kind of double, which is fantastic. That being said, given the fact that those documents show that you can play without necessarily creating additional respiratory issues, and that there is an exasperated exchange of air, and thus potentially COVID, you know, it sounds like, it does make sense to do that. The only thing I would caution you, Jamie, and the athletic directors, is to really monitor the kids a little more closely than normal, maybe shift out kids more often so that they have time to cool down and, you know, clear their lungs a little bit.
Yeah, and that's part of us retaining that JV coach as well, and having those assistant coaches to, to watch out, and, you know, to make sure that, you know, the head coach is, you know, watching something, and, you know, we have a defender down here that, you know, is asking to come out and everything, that we can also see, you know, make sure we see all that, and that's the importance of the trainer, and, and, you know, and to be honest with you, like, a lot of my job as the game director is, is going to be watching the game, you know, and, and the extra person that, you know, that we bring on for, you know, crowd control personnel and stuff like that is going to be walking the sideline and reminding about the masks and the social distancing, but my focus is going to be what's happening on the field and making sure that, you know, that, one, we're, we're following protocols, but two, that, you know, we're, if I'm seeing someone that's looking tired or someone that's, you know, is asking out or, or, you know, something like that, that, you know, that, like, another set of eyes to make sure that our, our kids are going to be safe, like you're saying.
And it's, it's a tough decision for parents with kids that has, and I appreciate that, but, you know, they have to make a decision, it's right for their family, and we have to look at the collective, so.
Did you mention that to us during this hearing today about potentially gaiters?
Yeah, that's...
Yeah.
...pull-ups, which are more readable than these things?
Yeah. Yeah, so we are, I put it in order of gaiters for all of our athletes and our coaches and everything, and, you know, one thing that, you know, it goes around their neck, you know, they don't have to worry about whose mask is this one, is that mine, is that yours, you know, where's my mask or anything like that, it's, it's just always going to be there. You know, if they are in a, a spot where they, you know, head over to the bathroom or, you know, something like that, they can take it down for a second to breathe, and, you know, if they can socially distance, maybe at halftime, and, you know, a coach can spread them out a little bit, you know, so they can pull them down a little bit and, and get a little, you know, wind and, and stuff like that. They're easy to wash, you know, and I, I think that will, that will help the situation too.
Were there, back to monitoring kids, will there be people through the cross-country trails to monitor bonus as well?
Uh, yeah, typically you have, you know, I know on our home course, you know, we have people spread out to, you know, make sure that people go in the right direction, but also that's something that, you know, we, you know, if we can get volunteers and, you know, a lot of times we'll use our kids from SALT, and that'll be one of their service projects to help out at the cross-country meets and everything.
I think there's a trailing runner as well, except the policy, someone kind of goes through and makes sure that it's finished.
A lot of times the coaches do that. They, they make sure that they track their kids and, and stuff like that as well, and, you know, so, yeah, the coaches are really good about, about helping with that stuff as well, so, we'll make, we have adequate, you know, I think we're, we're, we're trying to have two home meets this year, so we'll make sure we have enough volunteers.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Jay, I do want to thank you, because I know this sounds like tons of work, tons of paper. I want people to realize, this isn't a Jamie thing, it's not a board thing, it's not a Susan thing, you should be angry at NHIA AA. If they had come out with guidelines, if they had given us something to do as a school district, as a, as a state of New Hampshire, we wouldn't have to be making all these decisions with different communities. We'd all be on the same page. That, that's where I'd like to see people get, put their anger instead of us.
Well, I mean, related to that, I just think it, I mean, with all of these decisions that we're all making, this is, this is a new world, and we do it with humility. We don't declare that we know everything, that we have the right answers. What we're trying to do our best to do is look at the guidelines we've been provided with and try to interpret them as best we can, you know, from their wording, both from our, our own logic.
And choose the safest outcome overall.
That's all we're trying to do.
I didn't think to your point Elizabeth, I think it's a, it's a resource issue in a lot of ways. We don't have the resources to hire all these experts, the NHIA may not even have that. It's a higher level where people can have the resources to make broad discussion, broad decisions using the expertise that we just can't get. It is frustrating.
I, I can tell you that Vermont has, they don't, it's, their association is called the Vermont Principals Association, and the Vermont Principals Association put a mandate in that all their athletes will be wearing masks. So, because of regional schedules, some of the New Hampshire teams will have to wear masks to, to play the Vermont schools. And I'm not sure Massachusetts did, but I know that they were talking, I know they canceled football, but I know they were talking about, for their moderate-risk sports, that they were going to have their athletes in masks. I don't know where they ended up on that, but I know that was one of their considerations when they first came out.
Jamie, do you think we'll have fewer ga, I mean, we're obviously going to have fewer games this year, correct?
Yeah, I mean, just because we're starting, you know, we're starting the, three weeks later.
Yeah.
You know, so basically, we have two weeks in, in, in September to play games, and then three weeks or four weeks in October before the open tournament, so, and we're playing two games a week, you know, eight to 10 games is probably what we're looking at. You know, so, sure schedule, and, and only going two games a week, we just, that's all we can really fit in.
But won't it be awesome to be able to do that? Our athletes in the spring...
Right, it's better than we got in the spring.
...to get this opportunity, you know? To me, whatever we can do, so long as it's safe, it's a wonderful thing.
And maybe we'll get Channel 13 to broadcast them?
Oh, yes, that's one, that, that is one thing, yes, we've already, I spoke with Tim, and we are going to livestream as many as we can. So, the, you know, so each household gets two, but also the opposing fans, you know, I'll share that link with their athletic director.
Yeah, I don't want to hear cheering from home and not be able to go to see it.
Right, get a yell out. So, anybody can, you know, you know, and potentially it could work out for grandparents in another part of the country or something like that, you know, so...
It could be a blessing too.
Yeah, so, I just, you know, once that schedule's finalized, Tim is going to, you know, I'm going to send it to Tim, and he's going to try to get as many as he can, and, and other districts are doing the same thing, so when we go to a, a opposing town, you know, we could get the link from them and, and see those as well.
Which, by the way, we don't say it often enough, but thank you Channel 13.
Yeah.
Continuing broadcasting every single meeting, being here at all hours.
Can I just, gonna say, the mask, I understand masks, masks are hard, there's so many other things in here that break my heart, that just picturing the teams and how they're so cohesive, and it just breaks my heart. I'm glad that they can play, but it just, it's not going to be the same experience.
No, I, I don't think it's ever going to be the same. I mean, you know, and it's, you know, you know, last year seniors, we thought they had it hard because they missed their spring season and their end of their school year. Well, this year seniors, you know, they're, nothing's going to be, they're not going to have the home, you know, the homecomings and, you know, there's going to be a lot of changes, so, but...
Thanks for the work, I appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Jamie.
While we're talking about extracurricular, I hope that we can also offer some, some arts and some other, maybe theater outside of the rec or something, just, there's a lot of other great programs that may be lacking as well, so.
The drama club did happen remotely.
Oh, did they?
In the spring, yeah, it did. At the junior, senior high. And the, the elementary school put on their play remotely with different pieces.
Yeah, it did last year, I sent it out the last, the last thing of the year. And we will do, as I said, so long as we can figure out a way to do it safely, we will do as much as we can. We will do as much as we can. One of the things that was in the original document was that we would offer, if it was safe to do so, in moderate sports, but we had said at that time, you know, co-curriculars virtual, so this is also a change in that.
Right.
Because of Jamie's good work, you know, we were able to reimagine how we could do some other activities non-remote for co-curriculars, which are also important. So those aren't off the table either, and we're pleased with that. And the guidelines for co-curricular here, and they'll follow the same basic pattern, you know, some things don't apply, but other, other things do. So the spectator piece, if, if we're able to figure out how to do a concert, you know, socially distanced and all of that, the parents could then come and see their children, if we can give two per household and livestream it for the rest. So we'll, we'll continue to try to enjoy some of the traditions here, to the greatest extent possible.
Maybe make some new ones.
Yeah, exactly, exactly, like we did for graduation.
There you go.
Any other comments on this issue?
Well, I just, I just want to say I don't, I mean, I think everyone knows here, I don't agree with the masks being worn in sports. I, I did a lot of research, and it's all over the board, you know, I can't get, some articles say highly contraindicated in playing high aerobic sports. Then I read another article, and it's it. So I'm not saying I have concrete evidence that it's better not to wear masks, but I just want, you know, knowing that I don't agree with it. But in saying that, I thank Jamie for all the work he did, because I know, you know, I've talked to Jamie throughout the summer, just, we're friends, whatever, and I know he's been working on this all the time, it's all the work he did, but I just, I want to see soccer go on, so I guess I'm just gonna grin and bear it, but I just want to know, people know I don't agree with it. I just hope we don't have any other, you know, risks of injury or breathing problems with it, so, I just think that we're going to have to watch, like Jamie said, that he'll be watching the game, making sure players are, you know, not having issues or anything like that, so, and I like that the, you're going to have other, the junior basketball coaches there working as well.
Yeah.
So that's, that gives me a little more comfort. That's it, that's all I want to say.
Thank you. Any other comments? Okay, so we can move down, I think, to our action items. I know this is a sixth grade orientation meeting tonight, so that's, some folks might want to see that. Jamie, thanks again.
Thank you very much, Jamie.
So approval of minutes?
I don't think we have them.
Don't think we have them, let's defer that to our next meeting.
Yeah, they weren't in the package.
We also don't have the manifesto, we'll defer that.
We're off, off our calendar here a little bit.
We are.
So, well, approval of co-curricular and athletic guidelines, I might seek a motion.
So moved.
I'll second it.
Is there any further comment? Hearing none, let's take a vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And all opposed, say nay.
Nay.
Aye.
Aye.
Four ayes and one nay. That motion is approved. Next on our agenda, we have the teacher MOA.
Do we? Yes.
Is that, do we need to defer that?
We probably should.
Yeah.
Yeah, we should.
Or should we not?
It did, we don't need to.
Okay.
The teachers voted today.
Okay.
I was just seeing, I, I didn't get caught up on the paras. We, we've been working diligently with the paras as well. In fact, yesterday, Arizona Committee as, as well. So I don't have a document for you on that, though we, we did check with you on the teachers, and it did pass today, so you can take action on that, and I'm just waiting to see if the, we, we should probably wait on the paras, because you haven't seen that one yet, so that doesn't be fair.
When, when are we getting that, you know?
Um, well, I, that's what I was trying to see. They had a meeting today, and we were putting together the language, and I ran from one meeting to here, and I just, I don't know if...
I peeked at it, Erica sent me something, and I looked really quickly.
Yes, so we'll do it the next meeting, we'll do that the next meeting, because we're, we're like an inch away.
Yes.
We're an inch away, and, and you haven't seen it, and I haven't seen the final myself, so it could be in my email box at some point. It's not fair to ask that. But the teachers one did pass today with their vote, so we can move forward with that one.
We had another successful meeting with Amy, Susan, myself, and the president and the vice president of the Teachers Union, Joanne Lazarus, and Delaney Rosenberg, it was great again.
I'm still delayed.
Mike, well, I'm not going to say anything. I think that's all I have to say. Amy, do you have to add anything?
No, I think you summed it up.
So, we say thanks a lot, but I mean, you can't say it enough, and those folks came in Saturdays and whatnot, so Amy and Kim, thank you, and, you know, Gary and Elizabeth, I know you were in Saturday with the paras as well, so...
And the teachers and paras for coming in and meeting with us and discussing and being...
So everybody's bringing it together to get this done, so we really appreciate it, and it's not, it's not adversarial, it's more of the spirit of cooperation and, and discussion, so we all appreciate that. So, may I have a motion to approve the teacher MOA?
So moved.
I'll second it.
Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
It's unanimous. And then, so we'll defer the para LOA until next meeting.
Yep.
So next on our list, acceptance of a leave of absence?
Yes, so, I'm looking in the packet, we have a number of paras, maybe just one this time, but that have requested a leave of absence, and I can't seem to find it in my packet. Here we go. Some of them are related to circumstances that are personal, and one of them, and you'll see a couple of these come in in the next meeting or so, of paras or tutors who are taking a leave so they can teach for us. So, there's one, and so that's what we're seeing.
We don't have them.
Oh, you didn't get it?
We don't have them.
Yeah.
Okay, well then let me just...
You could pair it first.
Let me, let me share.
Yeah.
Okay, so we have, let me get the people right, so Alexandra Lockwood is requesting a leave of absence from her par position so that she can be one of our additional teachers at the elementary school. Lauren Mosley, let me do this one really quick, has a personal circumstance, and she's going to need to take a leave of absence this year. So, obviously, we would support their request for leave of absence, and would ask you to do the same.
Seek a motion to approve those leaves of absence?
So moved.
I'll second it.
Any discussion? None? Okay, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
That's unanimous. And then finally, Susan, a hiring update?
Yes, so let me give you some of this, let me see. What you'll see here is the addition of those teachers that we... What you'll see here is the addition of those teachers that we had to add in order to keep our class sizes low and accommodate both remote and in-campus learning. So, at the elementary school, we have five teachers that are in that category. So, we have Jessica Sanchez, who was a parrot in the kindergarten, Barbara Sax, who was one of our reading interventionists, Madeline De Rosier, who was, again, a math tutor that we hired this year to fill Linda Saliga's spot, so she'll be moving into teaching, Alexandra Lockwood, who I just mentioned, and then Sarah Hamel. Sarah Hamel's coming to us from, is it Greenland, Greenfield?
Greenland.
A neighbor, where she was an elementary school teacher, she's been a para, she's a parent here, and when I was interviewing her, she said, you know, I, without hesitation, put my name in, my application in, because I am so pleased with the level of detail and the level of planning that has taken place here, and I couldn't feel any safer. So, I was, that was, that was nice to hear. It's nice to hear when people say, parents tell us how much they appreciate the work. So, she will be joining us as our fifth grade, our additional fifth-grade teacher. Also, just give you a little kind of hot off the press, so in order to be able to fill out the high school schedule, we had to add a halftime art teacher, but we had a halftime, so this just made that position full-time. So, that was kind of an easy fix, and of course, you know, that our computer science teacher sadly had circumstance in her personal life, very sad, and she's not able to join us. That was very disappointing, but we totally understand was not something any of us would have, want to have to face. Having said that, so, computer science teachers are really hard, and we're working on making some modifications. A lot of what she was going to teach was kind of a computer literacy level, computer media-level courses, which is not programming and the higher-level computer science, but nonetheless, what we consider to be in that area. And today, we found a qualified math teacher that can work with our business education teacher that we just hired, who is also qualified to do the programming pieces. So, it looks like we're going to be able to close that, so I'm giving that hot off the press before Mike has signed a contract, and I finalized all of this, but this is great, great news, because this is the last faculty position that's kind of on the docket to hire, so that's a relief. And then, we've had to hire some permanent subs also, and we're an inch away from being able to hire those, which will help cover for teachers who have to, cannot come in because of, you know, just a situation, there's a medical situation, we need to have some people in the classrooms with our kiddos to help be the hands and the eyes and the arms.
Can I, if those subs aren't working, if we don't need them during the day, is there any way that we could pay them to stay in the cafeteria?
We already have that booked. Our plan already includes all of that.
All right.
All of that, and we still need ten more. All of that, and we need ten more. I do, I also do have one full-time monitor position that I, that I need. I should mention that, too. There is one that's an all-day position, that would be seven forty-five to two forty-five, Monday through Thursday, so I do have one of those that I need to, to cover one of these classroom monitor positions. So, again, if somebody is out there, please, please reach out. So, I mean, it's very exciting, we're happy that we're able to be sitting here in this position. Like I said, it's really miraculous. And I do, the principals, assistant principals, I mean, they are working their heart and souls out. I just can't, I just can't thank them enough, you know? I just, it's a really special group of administrators you have here in New Market right now. I just, you know, their commitment and dedication, blood, sweat, and tears have gone into this. I was at a meeting just before that, exhausted with tears, trying to figure out, how are we going to get lunches? For faculty. That's how hard they've tried, you know? So, anyways.
Susan, on the lunches, are we going to do bag? It's going to?
It's non-perishable, my understanding is, that what we would be serving would be non-perishable, but I don't know the details on that for you tonight.
Okay.
This is scary.
Yep. I haven't gotten a full briefing on that one. I will have it tomorrow morning, but I don't have that for you tonight.
Any questions on hiring update? Nothing? Okay. We do have a business for non-public, and I'd seek a motion to enter into non-public pursuant to RSA ninety-one A, point three, Roman two, C.
Should we accept those new hires?
Yes, we will, sir.
Yeah, you confirm.
Will we confirm?
Yep.
Let's confirm those. Make a motion to confirm the new hires. Dr. Givens, this evening.
I'll second it.
Any further discussion?
Aye. Oh, Dr.? No.
Thank you, Dr. Givens, for that update and for the work on those hirings. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, it's unanimous. Now, I'd seek that motion to enter into non-public pursuant to subsection C.
I'll second it.
Okay, by roll call, go over, Shelton.
Aye.
Ms. Kitty?
Aye.
Aye? Would you have, Ms.?
Gary Swanson, aye.
Mr. Swanson, aye. Unanimous, we are in non-public, Tim.